Okay, call this meeting to order. At this time, if everybody would stand for the invocation, the pledge of allegiance and the Texas pledge.
Thank you, Mayor. Lord, we pray for all of those in our city. And Father, we pray that you would bless us this evening with insight, favor, and of course, a peaceful spirit as our wonderful city continues to grow. And Father, thank you for your presence in our city, and more than anything, thank you for your Son. And it's in his name we pray. Amen.
Praise the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored to the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. This time, we have a proclamation supporting the Reefs Across America Day, which is December 16th, 2023. And just to give you a little background here, I had the privilege of being on an Honor Flight to Washington, D.C. And on that Honor Flight, I met this gentleman. He's from Rolette, so don't hold that against him. But anyhow, he was a corpsman in the Navy, which was in Vietnam. He was a little bit after me in Vietnam, but one of the things that if you're a veteran, if you were in Vietnam, you know one thing, that when you got in firefights and got into altercation, the first person you called for was a corpsman. And that's what he did. He was wounded four times, got four Purple Hearts, and he wears the Silver Star. Silver Star, for you people who don't know about that, it's the highest rank under the Medal of Honor. So I mean, this is a true hero. And we got a proclamation, and Tina's gonna read it because her father was in the Korean War. He had, he was also Silver Star, and he had two Purple Hearts. So Tina, please read it.
Whereas in 1992, Marine businessman Moro Warchester wanted to honor our nation's veterans, so he placed surplus wreaths from his family's wreath company on headstones at Arlington Memorial Cemetery. From this, Wreaths Across America, the nonprofit organization, was born. And whereas, the goal to expand the annual lay-in ceremony at Arlington National Cemetery, the organization's mission, remember, honor, teach, is carried out in part each year by coordinating wreath lay-in ceremonies in December at the national cemetery, as well as thousands of veterans' cemeteries and other locations in all 50 states and beyond. And whereas, the ceremony first received national attention when a picture of headstones adorned by wreaths at Arlington National Cemetery was seen online. The publicity resulted in 160 cemeteries around the United States requesting wreaths. By 2007, there were 275 cemeteries across the United States involved. And at the end of 2022, there were about 3,700 locations worldwide. And whereas, the wreath lay-in is still held annually on the second or third Saturday of December. The annual pilgrimage from Harrington, Maine, to Arlington National Cemetery has become known as the world's largest veterans' parade, stopping at schools, monuments, veterans' homes, and communities all along the way to remind people how important it is to remember, honor, and teach. And whereas, by hosting the fundraising exhibit, North Texas Wreaths of Honor continues the efforts of teaching and bringing together local communities and our military with educational stories and interactive connections. The exhibit inspires citizens to become more actively involved in honoring our veterans and their legacy, and provides a unique opportunity to reflect on the service and sacrifice of our veterans and their families. Therefore, be it resolved that the Corinth City Council does hereby proclaim December 16th, 2023, Wreaths Across America Day in Corinth, Texas, and urges all citizens to reflect on the service and sacrifice of our veterans and honor them through the acts of service as they have given their lives to protect our freedoms and serve our nation. Signed the 7th day of December, 2023.
And what I'd like to do is have Mike Kretuski, who's the gentleman that I know from the Honor Flight, and Melissa Weaver, she'll be here to receive the proclamation. And I'd like to have any veterans that are here in this audience stand up and come down here and get your picture taken with them, because we are here to honor all of you too for your service.
I just want to thank each and every one of you. My name is Lucy Weaver. I'm the director of Wreaths Across America at the DAFW National Cemetery. And currently this year, we raise 52,850 wreaths, which will be placed on December 16th. The DFW National Cemetery currently interns 92,000 veterans, and those include cremated sites and regular burial sites. It has the capacity of 280,000, and we bury approximately 22 a day, five days a week, all year round. So every year, our goal gets higher and higher. With North Texas having an aging population, especially for the Vietnam era, we expect, you know, that to raise in the next few years. Texas has 1.5 million veterans registered, and we have 47,000 Purple Heart recipients just in the state of Texas. So in 2021, the DFW National Cemetery is the first cemetery to be declared Purple Heart Cemetery in the country. So we take that honor as an honor, and there are, I couldn't even explain what it feels like to be out there and after a wreath was laid on every single site on December 16th. It's sombering, it's beautiful, it's a celebration of everything that those men and women did for us, and we want to continue that by remembering them, honoring them, and teaching the future generations. You can visit www.wreathsacrossdw.com. There's more information on how to sponsor wreaths and to volunteer, and we would love to see you all out there. Thank you.
Thank you.
I might add just a minute here. I'm Mike Kretuski, and if you've seen the movie Axol Ridge, that's kind of like my story. I never carried a weapon, and I was in the medical field, and I got involved with wreaths along the, about six years ago. And the very first time I did, I took my granddaughter, who at the time was 10 years old. And every year after that, she's always said, "Grandpa, when are we gonna go back? Because I wouldn't do that again, and again, and again." And then, oh, yeah, there's a little interruption. Well, this year, she came again and said, "Grandpa, I don't only want to do it, but your daughter, my mom, wants to do it, and my classmates want to do it." So next week on the 16th, that'd be four or five of us are gonna go out there and lay wreaths. And if you've never done it, I encourage you to do it. If you have children, take a child, thank the kids. And if you're a grandparent, thank your grandkids. It will absolutely change their lives and your life as understanding what the price of freedom is all about. So, thank you very much for listening.
Okay, citizens' comments. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Comments about any of the council agenda items are appreciated by the council and may be taken into consideration at this time or during that agenda item. Council is prohibited from acting on or discussing items before they met this time. Do we have any citizens' comments?
Mayor, I think they were all wanting to speak at the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
May I make a motion to approve?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Got your vote. It's unanimous. Item number 12, conduct the public hearing to consider testimony and act on the rezoning request for the applicant, Chris Bowen, to amend the zoning ordinance and zoning map of the city of Corinth, each being a part of the Unified Development Code of the city, by amending Plan Development Number 55 for the purpose of modifying land use regulations, increasing the number of lots, and updating the associated exhibit on approximately 5.4 acres located on the southwest corner of FM 2499 and FM 2181. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Tonight, our city planner, Miguelin Clon, will present this information and answer any questions that you have.
Honorable mayor, members of the city council, Miguelin Clon, planner, tonight bring for you a plan development request for the southwest corner of 2499 and 2181. This is already zoned as PD 55 for the base on U.S. C2 commercial that was adopted in 2018. It's been plotted as a two-lock development with a 711 platted on lot one. Lot two remains undeveloped. Does have a drainage facility on site, and lot two also has a few tree rows as well. The applicant has requested to amend the PD. What you're seeing right now is the existing PD 55, which was originally envisioned as a three-lot development with the 711, excuse me, this is a little slow, 711 site right at the corner, and a retail and restaurant building in what was to be lot two, and a bank with a drive-through sellers on what is, what was to be lot three. Market has changed over time, and the applicant has not had success developing the site as, as originally zoned, and they have come back with a request to rezone this planned development, and they have some prospective tenants already lined up. The new, what he proposed, planned development now breaks this up into five lots. Lot one, which is the 711, remains as it is. Lot two will now have a restaurant-retail building that's smaller in scale with a drive-through restaurant and one of the end caps, as well as patio space for outdoor dining. Lot three is envisioned to be a drive-through-only restaurant. It's a salad restaurant. I'll show you the elevations in a moment. Lot four is envisioned to be a drive-through-only coffee shop, and what is envisioned to be the proposed lot five is still undetermined what type of tenant will be there. However, we are going to write standard, well, we already broke standards in that proposed amendment to allow for either drive-through only or a restaurant with drive-through contingent on meeting parking requirements. This is the proposed landscape plan that shows enhanced landscaping in addition to what is usually required on our landscape buffers and parking lot landscaping. You will see that along the common lot lines, there is trebory ornamental trees. There's also pedestrian connectivity. They're providing sand concrete and walkways to allow for some pedestrian connectivity. That's considering the fact that this is within walking distance from Denton Batter High School. So it is expected that this could also be a draw for some of those children who may be walking home from school. This is one of the proposed tenants for the drive-through coffee shop, which is Scooter's Coffee. These elevations would be adopted with the PD, so the site plan, if this is approved and the site plan comes in, the elevations must be generally consistent with what you're seeing right now. The lot three is a salad go, which is a drive-through salad chain, and this is one of the newer formats and elevation patterns that they're rolling out, that's my understanding. And this is, these are the elevations for the retail and restaurant building. Now, those tenants are not determined, and the applicant may answer to that as well. That's more of a longer term. I can share that the salad go and the scooters is something that would be developing within the next few months if this is approved. Some of the deviations that are being requested is due to the reconfiguration of the lots. So because the number of lots increased, some of the lot sizes are smaller than what is required by the base zoning district. It also allows for a restaurant with drive-through service only, which is currently in unlisted use, and because this is new to the market, and many cities are going to have those regulations, the proposed planned development would have specific regulations that would allow this by right without the need for a specific use permit. So essentially, if this planned development is approved, they don't have to come back for a specific use permit for these drive-through restaurant uses. It would be written into this. The lot width is reduced by 20 feet for some of the lots. The parking regulations for restaurants are also being requested to be modified from one base for 150 square feet of floor area, based on the concept plan, which is very detailed compared to the traditional concept plan. The proposed uses would meet the parking, lot five, when it develops, would have to meet this parking standard. The land use and development strategy identifies as a sport or commercial, which allows for a range of local serving retail restaurants and personal services. Some of the key elements of this place type is for shared access driveways, landscaping, and screening parking along the roadway, activation of secondary sidewalk internal to the site along the storefronts, which the applicant has provided in their, in their design. The existing zoning against PD 55, it is entirely surrounded by C2, so this is consistent with the surrounding zoning. The site is also part of a strategic focus area that was identified when the plan was developed, which calls for pad retail sites, and they're both explore development scenarios, which recognize that this site, due to its location, that is generally isolated from the rest of the city, and because of its location in two major thoroughfares in Denton County, recognizes that the most likely use to be developed here is auto-oriented, which is why the applicant is requesting the drive-through uses. Based on the above, the PD amendment complies with the comprehensive plan of the Texas Local Government Code. Public notice was provided through the Denton Record Chronicles, rated public notices were mailed to the owners, properties within the 200 feet, zoning change signs were posted, and the public hearing notice was posted on the website. As of today, we have received no letters of support, letters of opposition. We recommend approval as presented. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval, and we have a recommended motion. Do you have any questions for me?
Are there any questions from council?
I do. So you've got two that are drive-through only. We got lots three and four. So let's just say down the road that changes, as things often do. So will anything else be able to go in there, or just only something that's drive-through only? Or could these two lots be combined at that time if something larger wants to come, or...
Something could develop later, provided that they meet the standards. The PD was written with these two sites to accommodate the two proposed tenants. If they can combine the lots at a later time, they can do that. It could go through a PD amendment process. Really what is driving the development here in the design is the parking, given that it's a drive-through only, parking requirements are reduced. So if you have a use... was developed, which calls for pad retail sites. They're both explore development scenarios, which recognize that this site, due to its location that is generally isolated from the rest of the city, and because of its location in two major thoroughfares in Denton County, recognizes that the most likely use to be developed here is auto-oriented, which is why the applicant is requesting the drive-through uses. Based on the above, the PD amendment complies with the comprehensive plan of the Texas Local Government Code. Public notice was provided through the Denton Record Chronicles. Rated public notices were mailed to the owners' properties within the 200 feet. Zoning change signs were posted, and the public hearings notice was posted on the website. As of today, we have received no letters of support, no letters of opposition. We recommend approval as presented. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommends approval, and we have a recommended motion. Do you have any questions?
Are there any questions from council?
I do. So you've got two that are drive-through only. You've got lots three and four. So let's just say down the road that changes, as things often do. So will anything else be able to go in there, or just only something that's drive-through only? Or could these two lots be combined at that time if something larger wants to come?
Something could develop later, provided that they meet the standards. The PD was written with these two sites to accommodate the two proposed tenants. If they can combine the lots at a later time, they can do that. It could go through a PD amendment process. Really what is driving the development here in the design is the parking. Given that it's a drive-through only, parking requirements are reduced. So if you have a use, so for lot five, for example, the developer still does not know what type of use it will be. It could be a restaurant with a drive-through with dinette service. Well, that will trigger a more stringent parking demand, which will require more spaces. So this is tailored to really parking is able to drive the design of this site.
I have a question. Are you preserving any of the trees at the back? You know, I always ask about the trees. But there's, that's a big growth back there. Are any of those trees, are we able to preserve any of those trees?
Based on this concept, it appears that tree preservation will be very limited. The applicant is not requesting to deviate from the tree ordinance they would mitigate as written in our current regulations. We have not, you know, this is the zoning process, but based on existing conditions and the layout of the site.
Is it, it's got a drainage problem? Is that the issue?
No, the drainage facility is already existing.
I mean, because it looks, what is this at the back of the lot? What is that?
Yeah, that is the existing drainage facility.
Okay, so the employee parking is what I'm going to call it. There towards the back there. Is that kind of where that tree, where that grove is?
The majority of the trees are located within this area. And I'm going to go back to the aerial. So yes, most of this is likely to go. The applicant has indicated that they will make every possible attempt to preserve as many trees as possible. However, based on the layout, it appears that any preservation would be limited.
Okay, and that's going to be a real far walk from the high school. I mean, that is, and you're not going, nobody's going to be walking home. There's no homes to walk to. So, but I will say, I travel that every morning because Matty is in Flower Mound, and so every morning I travel that. I come down 2181 and I turn to go south on 2499, and the traffic is crazy. Like it is, there is a lot of traffic. So I can imagine that those two types of businesses, coffee and lunch, a salad place, I think that they would be successful there, just because I drive it every day and see the amount of traffic. And I just, you know, I like to preserve the older trees, and so that's always a question I always ask. So thanks, Miguel.
Are there any other questions? If not, then I entertain a motion on this item.
Mayor, the applicant's here to provide the presentation if needed, and it also requires a public hearing.
Evening, Council. Mayor, who, sorry, staff.
Please state your name and your address for the record, please.
Jay Holman, current Southside Holdings, 46.2 Maple Avenue, Dallas, Texas, 75219. Not much to expand on, but Miguel had showed here, but we can just, I can run through it and answer any other questions you might have. So we're just doing a modification of the original one that we did with the 711 about five years ago. As we run through, we have a retail, restaurant concept shop, retail center, about 7,600 square feet, salad and go, scooters, retail center, drive-through oriented. It's just become a necessity for retail centers since then to have an end cap with a drive-through, provided a patio with that other end cap. And the trees, I understand, we're going to do our best to save what we can, but we're going to enter the mitigation program as stated. So it's just, you know, some of those have to go.
Yeah, I mean, I get, I mean, I get it.
Otherwise, you know, any other questions, I can, you know, Miguel, we've been working with staff pretty close for the last few months to get to where we are right now. So again, my presentation is pretty much what he's run through.
Are there any questions from council?
So I'm unfamiliar with scooters. It's 100% drive-through? And they're?
They have two, and both of these will have two drive-through lanes. I think we might have brought up the issue of like later. We obviously, as developers, don't like to go into situations like a failure. So, but the way these two drive-throughs work, if some of the use needs become later in the future, there's a lot of paving here and there's two drive-through lanes. So that can be modified if another building need to expand due to the double drive-through. So, but, you know, we anticipate pretty good success here. Like you said, traffic up and down 2499 is all we can do.
I was surprised, actually.
Elevations, try to keep it cohesive throughout with the retail and the two at the bad side. So, and the last lot, lot five, will obviously follow the same sort of architectural with the rest of the lots.
Any other questions from council? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. I entertain a motion on this item.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve. Oh, we haven't done a public hearing yet, sir. I resent my motion.
There you go. Okay, my fault. All right, we're going to open it up for a public hearing. Are there any people that want to speak to this issue on the public hearing? Okay. Close the public hearing. I entertain a motion on this item.
I would like to make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous.
Okay, item number 13, conduct the public hearing to consider testimony and act on the request by the applicant, Skorbert Company, to amend Corin's comprehensive plan, envision Corin 2040 master thoroughfare plan by removing the proposed future collector roadway connecting Lake Sharon Drive to Hollis Drive.
Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, our planning manager, Michelle Meisel, will cover this item. Answer any questions?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The project before you, the master thoroughfare plan amendment, is actually a companion piece to the agenda item number I-14, public hearing. This master thoroughfare plan was adopted in 2024. It identifies a north-south collector street through the Bond property. Lake Sharon Drive is to the north, and Hollis Drive is to the south. In 2020, there were a number of collector roads that were identified to create ease of connection in a grid pattern. The applicant is requesting that the roadway be eliminated and that the connection from Hollis Drive to Lake Sharon be instead designed as a local street. Coincidentally, around the same time that the applicant was considering their project on the Bond property, our staff internally, Public Works initiated with our consulting engineer, BHC, that the city review the collector streets that we have in the master thoroughfare plan. And this roadway was identified at that time to be eliminated due to the future, current and future traffic loads within this location not warranting a full-width collector roadway. And this is, this next item is just mentioning that if the request is approved, this collector amendment would be approved, but the companion item, Oak Ridge Park rezoning not approved, or is approved and the proposed plan development does not materialize, any future development would be required to provide a local street connection to Hollis Drive in a similar fashion and would be required as any other existing sub-street. And just for frame of reference, Hollis Street is a wide, is a wide street, but it also has neighbor, access, single-family homes on accessing onto it, fronting. So this would continue, should that property develop in the future, the Bond property develop in the future, would continue that neighborhood feeling rather than a large collector. On November 13th, the, this setup is different than what it usually is. On November 13th, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval to the master thoroughfare plan amendment by removing the proposed future collector street and connecting Hollis Drive to Lake Sharon, and staff is recommending approval as presented.
Are there any questions from council? Okay, any question? Okay. Thank you very much.
And this is a public hearing.
Okay, just, hey, at this time, do you, does Veltra want to speak on that? So at this time, I'll open it up for a public hearing. Is there anybody that wants to speak to this issue on the public hearing? Close the public hearing. I entertain a motion on this item.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous.
Item number 14, conduct the public hearing to consider testimony and act on the rezoning request by applicant, Skorbert Company, to amend the zoning ordinance and zoning map of the city of Corin, each being a part of the Unified Development Code of the city, from an SF4 single-family residential and C1 commercial to a planned development with a base zoning district of SF4 single-family residential for the development of a residential subdivision on approximately 57 acres located generally south of Lake Sharon Drive, north of Hollis Drive, and Custer Drive, east of Fairview, west subdivision, and west of Lavinia Drive and Trinity Chairs.
Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Our planning manager, Michelle Meisel, will handle this item as well. Answer any questions yet?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is the companion piece that I just spoke of, the Bond property. This is approximately 57 acres. It is currently zoned SF4. The project is entitled currently Oak Ridge Park. It's a single-family planned development, moving from SF4 and C1 to a PD with SF4 base zoning. It is again located on the south side of Lake Sharon, west of Lavinia Drive, which is a stub street, north of Hollis Drive, which is a stub street here, and east of Zachary Drive. It's also south of Ashford Park subdivision, bounded to the west by Fairview subdivision, and Taylor Ridge to the east, and Amherst to the southeast. In terms of existing conditions, it, again, is 57 acres. There is an existing small pond on the property and several, a single-family residence homestead. There is an active gas well on the site, and it is heavily treed. The site fronts on to Lake Sharon, and there are three existing curb cuts on the, on Lake Sharon, and two existing streets stubbing out to the east, Lavinia and Hollis to the south. In terms of future land use, this area is considered neighborhood land use development strategy, which envisions transitions to existing neighborhoods. It talks about new urbanist concepts and traditional neighborhood design, as well as walkable trails, open space, and connections. The master plan of the 2024, 2040 comprehensive plan talks about the elimination, has the identification of a collector street here, but as you just approved, it would be eliminated and be reconstructed as a collector street. In terms of neighborhood residential, just as a reminder, back in 2020 of July, this area, area, much of the Bond property in the area to the north was identified as mixed residential, which provided for a much higher intensity and mix of uses, multifamily, as well as up to six to 10 units per acre. In March of this year, that area on the comprehensive plan was amended to identify it as neighborhood residential, which envisioned a mix of residential single-family types of uses, and as well as traditional neighborhood design, key transitions, as I mentioned, and new urbanist concepts for any types of new development. The applicant's proposal is 57 acres. They're proposing to develop in one phase. It's 310 single-family detached lots. You'll hear the applicant talk about entering into a contract to abandon the gas well. Again, it has a proposal to connect Hollis Drive to the south via a median, with a median, and creating this more circuitous route of a local street out to Lake Sharon to serve as traffic calming and not to promote a through connection through the neighborhood to the south and vice versa. One unique point of identifying the medians in this area does serve as traffic calming to this much, a larger, wider street Hollis to the south. So will, these single lanes will begin to create a narrowing, and we know that narrower, narrower streets do promote traffic calming, slowing the traffic. They'll be designed, as I mentioned, with medians and ball bouts for on-street parking, street trees, again, to promote traffic calming. It's understood that street trees do provide also that narrow, narrower feeling or intimacy on the street. There will be two access points that the applicant is proposing on Lake Sharon Drive, the main access. Here, this is their eastern access with the median, and then to the south. These are all, you can see just in a lighter line, existing curb cuts that will be utilized on Lake Sharon. They are, will be required. Our engineer, BHC, will require a left turn lane at this location and a left turn lane in this, as well as a closing of the median break here, because it would not have any purpose for connection. They are proposing cottage lots that are in the orange, that would be alley-served, patio lots with front garages, which are yellow, and the traditional larger neighborhood lots, which would also have front garages. The streets will be tree-lined, and there will be on-street parking, protected on-street parking, as well as the traditional street design of, as you would find in any traditional neighborhood in the city. The shade trees are planted along the streets, would be creating this tree-lined parkway. And just to point out that these, all of the street trees and the landscaping within the common open spaces would be maintained by the HOA, not the city. That's just another example of how this could imagine, street trees in the future. In terms of the representative product, they have three different types, the traditional, patio, and cottage. All lots are provided, all are a minimum of two-car garages with two-car spaces in the driveway. Again, the cottage lots are in the orange. These are representative products. The patio dwelling types are represented in the yellow, and the traditional single-family types are in the green. The applicant is proposing to preserve, to provide a de-due common open space that the HOA would maintain, 7.5 acres. It includes linear greenway trail system linking the east and west sides of the project, as well as linkages from Amherst, the trail linking it through the property and out to Lake Sharon. There is a large central green network of open space that includes, the darker green trees are all existing protected trees that the applicant has agreed in the zoning to preserve, as well as providing a large playground amenity and open lawn areas for unrestricted play. They are agreeing to preserve 4,000 and some change caliber inches of the existing protected trees on site, about 10% of the healthy protected trees, and they agree to mitigate replant or pay fee in lieu of 2,000 tree caliber inches of trees. That is in addition to the shade trees that you see planted on the streetscape, so that this would be above and beyond that. They are also proposing stormwater basin on the southeast corner that would be designed as an amenity feature with a trail, as well as landscaping pockets of, for benches and so forth, similar to what's provided in Ashford Park to the north. This would be a standard detention base, although they are proposing some tree preservation and additional plantings around the perimeter, similar to what they've done in Walton Bridge. In terms of a summary of key design standards of this project, and as a reminder, the PD is an opportunity for all applicants to provide is an opportunity for all applicants to provide for innovative or design options that aren't as, that would not be possible under the stringent standards of our base zoning. So in many cases, you'll see additional provisions or some that have been adjusted for departures. In terms of screening, the applicant's providing a six-foot-high masonry wall along the northern property line along Lake Sharon with seven-foot-tall columns, as well as some fencing that would be open where they have a large tree preserve. They have the tubular ornamental fencing. In terms of park and trail, they are providing the seven acres that would include a tree preserve, and they're agreeing to that upfront. They're providing bollard lighting, playground, amenitized storm pond, and enhanced landscaping. Again, in terms of landscaping, I should point out that the, the column on the left is what the base district requires, and this is what the applicant is proposing. So you can see, excuse me, you can see that right now, the builder installs shade trees and so forth, ornamental trees on home lots, and so they would be required as, what the applicant has agreed to, as the trees are shown on the landscape plan, they will be providing those in those locations. And they will be just installing those on certain areas along the parkway and the common open space lot, stormwater ponds, and out parcel. HOA, again, will be responsible for maintaining all of the shade trees within the public right-of-way, the common open spaces, the median landscaping in the right-of-way, and the landscaping on the individual cottage lot. So all of the lots that were in orange, that would be maintained by the homeowners' association. In terms of street design, the standard suburban style is required under SF four. They're providing on-street parking and shade trees, which is in keeping with this, this neo-traditional style. In the landscape edge buffer, they are requesting a departure to ten feet rather than the twenty feet, which would be on Lake Sharon. In lieu of that, they're proposing a large, greater number of shade trees and ornamental trees to be planted in groupings to, to buffer the view into the site. And it should also be noted that, that also is in keeping with the existing subdivision to the, to the west, which has fencing right adjacent to the sidewalk. So this would be consistent with what's adjacent. They are also replacing the existing four-foot sidewalk and increasing that in size to five. Good, okay. I promise I'm getting close. Their tree preservation, I mentioned, they're preserving ten point five, or ten point one percent. They're mitigating. They're also requesting to use an existing tree survey that was previously done, rather than the standard one-year. Let's see. In terms of parking, just to mention again, they are providing the two-car garage and the two cars in the driveway. They're also adding an additional ten space off-street parking, small parking lot for the, proposed for the park, and had eliminated at the request of Planning and Zoning Commission, a lot, a home lot to provide for that. And they're providing eighty-five protected on-street parking spaces, and have agreed to specifying that the orientation of a three-car garage would only be in conjunction with the J-spring, so the face of a garage would be hidden. Building the side materials consistent with what they did in Walton Ridge, they have proposed and agreed to providing additional landscape architectural features. This is just a summary, which is in your, in your packet, which shows the difference between the existing SF four base zoning and the different dimensional lot standards. In some instances, you can see that they're going above what the minimum lot size is on the traditional lots that are surrounding the, the property around the fringe, and then internal to the site are the smaller lots that would be facing and clustered more around the larger open space. Just a quick summary, the feedback, Planning and Zoning Commission, they did meet with them for two work sessions, when in August eighth, excuse me, August eighth and twenty-three, and October twenty-third of twenty-three. The feedback resulted, this was the original plan, I should say, from August, proposed some traditional lots around the southern and western side, that would have been the larger, then the fifties were the concentration on the east, and just north of that, none of the larger concentration of townhouses. They did not have the cottage lots at that time. So it was a much more intense proposal, based on that, that plan, based on the meeting with the Planning and Zoning Commission. They said, please examine getting rid of the townhouses, which the applicant did, and then also requested that they provide a much greater transition between the existing neighborhoods for larger lots, single-family. And then that came to the, was the result of the second workshop back in October, where you can see the larger lots were identified to be preserved around the, the existing neighborhood. From that meeting, they then came up with what we have before us. Another result was this request that additional parking be added, and I'll show you here in a moment, on the next slide, it's larger. This had originally been the patio lots, so it would have been smaller lots. They increased that to the larger traditional sixties to seventy-fives. They removed some of the cottage lots and added patio, and then put in the parking. And also what they did as part of, from the original, was to increase the size of the open space, preservation, tree preservation. The project is in compliance with the comprehensive plan in the opinion of staff. The neighborhood design, reference, the neighborhood land use category calls for maintaining transition between the existing neighborhoods, providing for pedestrian vehicular connections to the adjoining neighborhoods, which they're meeting. And then any new development should examine traditional neighborhood design and new urbanist concept, which is the neo-traditional sign with the street trees and the, the shorter setbacks and so forth, focusing on local detention, infrastructure, trails, a neighborhood that's focused on walkability and bikeability, and the design of new infrastructure that would be appropriate in terms of transition from the existing neighborhoods. Again, the developer held two neighborhood meetings with the surrounding property owners on October ten, and they'll go into detail on that, and then October eighteenth, another. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval on November thirteen, four to one, with the caveat that, that the applicant would go back and explore adding additional handicap parking spaces on the west side of the main street that goes through the property, and I'll, I'll show you there in a second. The feeling was, they did not want, they wanted us to evaluate whether or not on-street, on-street handicap parking could be closer to the park facility itself. I'll, I'll show you in just a moment. We looked at that, and we came up, rather than manipulating the drawing, we added a caveat that, for your consideration, that, one, that the parking area would be signed, the existing parking area on the east side of the main street would be signed, so that it would be for the benefit of park visitors only. And then we asked that we add this, this caveat, that the central green playground off-street parking area along Street D, that staff, that the addition of, the location of additional on-street parking, including the addition of handicap accessible spaces on the west side of the street, be further evaluated at the time of civil plans submitted, considering best practices in pedestrian safety and access. And this would also include the alteration of median and lane width from what's expressly depicted on the plan, as may be considered administratively by staff. We, we were thinking that at that time, we'd have the engineering drawings, and we could go a bit more detail. I'd like to read, based on our, in terms of the letters of support and protest, based on what was submitted this evening. Like to read this into the record. The properties within two hundred feet of the subject, subject site as of twelve seventeen, this evening, the city has received two letters of support representing four properties within two hundred feet of the subject area, and twenty seven letters of opposition representing fifteen properties within the two hundred feet of the subject area. Note that multiple letters of opposition were received from property owners residing at the same address, which resulted in a higher number of letters than the numbers of properties represented. The same, similarly with the properties outside of the two hundred feet. As of today, three letters of support representing twenty-eight properties located outside of the two hundred feet were received, and twenty-nine letters of opposition representing sixteen properties located outside of the two hundred feet were received. Staff's recommendation is approved, is recommending approval as presented, with the additional condition, this is not in your staff report, with the added condition that left turn lanes be constructed at the western and eastern median openings on Lake Sharon to access the site, and that the middle existing median opening be closed as part of the construction of this development. And I, I'll go back to question, I just wanted to show that this is the area that Planning and Zoning Commission was asking us to reevaluate by adding additional handicap parking.
For the purpose they use for the park?
Yes.
Handicap?
Yes. They do have two spaces that they're providing in the parking lot, but the discussion at P and Z was, they didn't, they would rather have the ability not to have to cross the street for someone who might be pushing a wheelchair, but rather, would there be an opportunity for on-street parking in this location? That would be designated as handicap.
So you talked about narrow streets to provide calming and the trees?
Yes.
To me, narrow streets don't make me calm, they make me nervous. But you also talked about on-street parking?
Yes.
That sounds like a nightmare, if you're going to have cars on the streets that are already narrow.
I should, I should probably back up and say that the streets are similar, are fifty-foot right-of-way the same that we currently have. What I meant by that was trying to narrow the one lane coming in and one lane exiting through that median, because Hollis Drive is designed with, I think it's a sixty-foot right-of-way, I've learned, and a sixty-foot right-of-way is for a collector. That street is very wide, but it functions as a neighborhood drive with actual driveways. So when I was mentioning narrowing, that would be here to calm the traffic coming from Hollis, to alert them, hey, that you're coming into a neighborhood. That these are all fifty-foot right-of-way, and the protective parking ball bouts, this there is actually, we did the math between, between, so over here is a, this would be a typical neighborhood street, and there's actually, I think it's one and a half feet difference added by providing the protective parking, if you had parking on both sides. So in terms of fire, it's actually a little bit wider. It's the same scenario that you have in Walton Drive, or Walton Ridge, excuse me, in, in that neighborhood. And it would, the narrowing would have, would go to one lane. You can see the, the median, because we were hoping to alert drivers that there's a trail crossing, and that they would be signaled with this, with this median and the narrowing of the lane, the, when I say narrowing, meaning a single lane, that's a normal design standard for a single lane, to, to create that traffic calming.
Are there any other questions from Council?
I have a couple. Michelle, so in the part of the PD, we're gonna stipulate, like, as far as the elevations, that kind of similar to what's been depicted, not exactly, you know? And is there a percentage of brickstone, masonry, whatever that's part of the PD?
I am going to have to defer to John. Do you know, I'll hand you that percentage?
The only reason I ask is because there was another development that they came back, and it looked completely different than what was presented, and so I just wanna make sure that it is part of the PD. And we had another one where it sold, and another developer came in, and we didn't have elevations as part of the PD.
Well, I'd like, I'd like to find that for them in terms of, sorry, I should have known that off. I mean, you, you could direct staff to, if, if it's not exactly as what they may have been required for Walton or another project, you could say, in your, as an added stipulation in your motion, that what you're seeing here is the, on the screen, that, that combination of materials is what you were...
Just the percentage of, of the exterior, be a certain percentage of brick or masonry or?
Yes.
Okay. And each lot will have a tree planted? On each lot?
Yes, so it's interesting, because the builder is, you can see that these trees, some trees are within the, between the curb and the sidewalks, so the builder will be required to place the, so most large trees, and the way our ordinance is written, this is based on the, the existing zoning district, base zoning. Some lots, based on their width, require two trees, and some lots require one tree. So they actually went through the landscape architect and identified for us, so that when we take this up to the next level, we'll know exactly which lots are, are getting. So you can see, some lots actually have, on this plan, two, four, six, eight, ten, eleven, twelve trees. This corner lot that I'm circling, that builder will be placing that number of trees with that lot, which is more than what, because we're requiring the on-street shade trees as well, or the parkway trees. So what you see is what you're going to get.
I just, I have, I have some concerns about parking.
Okay.
Just because in my neighborhood, I'm having to jockey around cars, you know? We have a lot of people that park on the street. Once, you know, people have children that are driving age, you're not gonna jockey one car out to let the kid go to school or dad go to work. And so you park on the street to avoid that. But it, parking concerns me, and, so, I just don't know how that will be avoided with thirty-foot lots all in a row. You know, a, a big, big pickup truck, you know, a, a, what's extended cab or whatever you call it, those are twenty-five feet long. So you park that in front of a house, and that in front of another house, that's gonna go two in a, two, over two houses, you know, if you get two of them. And I just think, I mean, I just think it's, it could be a potential problem down the road, and I don't wanna go into something that could have a potential problem down the road.
Right. This is, I, I hear what you're saying, concern for parking. It is a unique, it's a, it's a, this is a, a traditional, a neo-traditional style of development. It's similar to what they're doing in, that we approved for Timber Ridge, which was a townhouse development, but it's similar on-street parking, as well as Walton Ridge. Now Walton Ridge is not fully developed yet, but it, it, this is mimicking that...
Well, when I moved into my neighborhood, it wasn't a problem either.
Yes.
Just it's as we, they aged, and the kids have gotten older, and that you have multiple drivers in the house, that's when it becomes...
The hous, the housing cycle, the ages.
Yes.
Yes.
That's when it becomes an issue, and it, it's, it's not an issue in my neighborhood, because I have enough, my, my lot is wide enough that I can park in front of my house, and it doesn't encroach into the front of my neighbors. So the parking is a concern of mine, so, because people, I would say, probably seventy percent of the people that live in my neighborhood do not park in their garage. They either park in their driveway, or they park in the front of the street. So just, that's just a concern.
Your concern based on your existing experience?
Yeah, well, and I drive through neighborhoods, and I see it, so, and the Ashford Park and those houses are, those houses are close together. You know? And right now, it may not be a problem, but five or ten years down the road, I, I just, I wanna avoid a potential future problem, and I know I don't have a crystal ball, but it, it just concerns me.
You're, you're concerned? And, yeah, John will...
Are there any other questions from Council? Okay. All right, thank you very much. At this time, I believe I want the developer to present.
All right, while they're getting it up, I'll answer one question of Kelly's, the masonry's seventy-five percent. We just looked at, yeah, we have it over here, probably just one on the top of our book. And then I'm gonna also...
Please state your name and your address for the records.
I'm usually really good at that. John Harles, Orber Company, eighty-two, fourteen West Chester Street, Suite nine hundred, Dallas, Texas, seven-five, two-two-five. Thank you all for having me here, thank you for having me at the workshop. I'm gonna probably go through some of my pitch a little quicker because Michelle's very thorough and you all have seen some of this, but I'm gonna skip to a question real quick then go back. We're talking about the street, I just wanted to address that real quick, then I'll go back into my pitch. I kinda wanted to make sure everybody had a visual of what the street was. I know you've gone through Ashford Parks and there's the thirty-foot lots and there's a street and people are parked on the street and to park the street on both sides. What we're trying to avoid is actually putting, when she says on-street parking, it's technically kind of just parking right off the side, edge of the traveling lanes, there're gonna be kinda cutouts, so it feels separated and it actually goes further into the right-of-way and pushes the sidewalk back into the lot. So we have a right-of-way there that's the same fifty-foot right-of-way, but it actually pushes the sidewalk back into the lot and like we're doing an easement there, so the parking is actually, we still have the travel lanes, so let me go, that kinda have the... This is, you know, the entry where we were talking about the median landscape, what Michelle was saying, narrowing the streets, she kinda means that these, the medians, we're gonna come around with two lanes. You still have two lanes of traffic, but we're gonna take those two lanes around, so they'll feel narrower, but this is still the same two traffic lanes. And then coming in off Hollis, it's the same idea as it brings you down as a transition, more, the word should be transition, not narrowing, transitions it to the normal neighborhood right-of-way. So we still have the neighborhood right-of-ways. So this is a, now look at the, what we call the on-street parking. We still, if you can see above, this is a street section, so you still have your twelve-foot and twelve-and-a-half foot travel lanes, but then you have an eight-and-a-half foot parking on, right off the side of those travel lanes. So it's not technically on-street, so these will be cutout, so you'll be going down the street and you'll have, I don't know if you've driven through Walton Ridge, if you've driven through Walton Ridge, it has this, you're going down the street full travel lanes, but then you have the side, cut off to the side. So that's, that's the, that's what we're looking for is actually keeping the travel lanes and putting parking, increasing a little more into that. Okay, so that, I just, this is, so this is a normal travel lane here.
But you don't have those cutout lanes in front of every home?
We don't have them in front of every single home. We don't have them in the fifties and the sixties, that's a typical traditional neighborhood, but it's a...
Right, but what I'm saying, my, my problem that I potentially am trying to avoid is the people parked in front of the cottage homes, you know, you get two teenage drivers and they're parked in front of their house and then they're parked in front of their neighbor's house. You know what I'm saying?
I understand, I understand your concern, but also...
Or their friends come over or whatever.
I understand, you, you, we all live in a neighborhood where there's moments...
Yeah, for sure.
We, we have parking issues. I, no matter what size lot you live on, there's gonna be times when we have parking issues. Let me go, but I do hear your concern and we've, we've been working the staff and our traffic people to address that. And I think this is one step we try to take to address it from other neighborhoods that have cottage lots is do the on-street parking like we did at Walton Ridge. Okay, I'll kinda skip through who we are because I think everybody up here's heard me tell who we are and our projects in Walton Ridge, I think most of the audience has heard it a couple of times at this point now. So timeline, so we've been working on this project for about a year now. August, after working with staff for a couple of months, we came in for an August work session with P&amp;Z. Michelle showed the, the, that plan from before, had a lot of north-south open spaces. From that P&amp;Z meeting, we had got some feedback from neighbors and P&amp;Z that townhomes were not desired, so we went back to the drawing board, worked with different partners to look at the thirty-foot products and that's what we brought forth. They wanna detach, they didn't feel like town, detached townhomes felt more like old family, so we, we took that direction. We reduced the number of muse lots and made sure that we had a parking within closer ranges on muse lots and we prioritized tree preservation. We looked at the whole, the site of trees and there was an area that was more dense it looked like, so we looked into that and that was a request to P&amp;Z and we came back with that. And then, so ten-twenty-three, we came back to P&amp;Z. Between that, we'd had two, two neighborhood meetings, we sent letters to the people surround, within our buffer, surrounding the site and all, we messed up on the first one, we sent it over holiday weekend, I think it was long stay weekend and no mail on Monday, we had on Tuesday night, complete mess up on our part. Everybody called, we gave them opportunity to talk to them on the phone, do a Zoom call or we sent out another letter to do a meeting next week. I think we had, as Michelle counted, I think between the two meetings, we had a little over twenty people attended meetings. And then, so came back, P&amp;Z, after feedback from P&amp;Z, redesigned the plan with staff's help over the two months there and we presented a site plan with a hundred and eighty, thirty-foot lots, ninety-seven fifty-foot lots, forty-one sixty-five foot lots. As you can see, we, P&amp;Z had requested that we take the row of fifty-foot lots facing the traditional lots on the west side of the project and make those traditional lots, we did that. And then we took a section of the cottage lots and made those patio homes as you can see from there. And then parking, we talked about parking for the park. This is a, the park's gonna be maintained by the HOA, but it will be unique to the town and we expect some visitors in, so we put a parking lot in there. As I've said, we're about fifty-six acres, hundred and seventy cottage lots, eighty-six patio homes, fifty-four traditional lots. As, we are at five-point-five units per acre, we're just under the six to ten units per acre for the mixed residential. We're neighborhood now, initially before this, before the zoning, the future land use plan changed, the site was for mixed residential. And so we're below that, we tried to come in below that. We've enhanced our architectural standards, like I said, same language that we put in our projects before and we are at seventy-five percent. I'm gonna kinda skip through this because Michelle hit it very well, but the previous project was a mixed residential, as we all remember, it was right at ten units an acre at thirty-three single-family lots, fifty-six multifamily, five-hundred-and-forty-six multifamily, so total of right at five-hundred-and-seventy-nine, so it was just at ten units an acre. And so what we tried to do is make sure we came in below that because I know it had been moved to neighborhood and at this time neighborhood is more traditional with mixed use, mixed housing types, so we tried to come in with that and that's one of the reasons we put the traditional around our edges and as P&amp;Z asked, put another row of traditional within there and then gather the higher density in towards the middle of the property. One of the things that we talked with P&amp;Z about, a lot of neighbors about, was our surrounding neighborhoods versus our neighborhoods. One of the hard things to do today is to do that traditional neighborhood with all the requirements that we have today. The neighborhoods surrounding us were all built well before, there were street mitigation rules, parks, requirements, dedicated open spaces, sidewalks, entry features, screening, all of those type of things that have really changed what the traditional neighborhood is to the newer neighborhood. And we've, we've kinda gone through that a lot, so you do see neighborhoods coming in with some higher density in order to give the amenities, to give the open space, to give the entry features, to give us all those things we want in our neighborhood, it can't, can't quite do it with the old traditional neighborhoods. This is a comparison to our neighbors, our surrounding neighbors, we have Ashford Park to our north, Fairview West, to our west and south, Amherst and Taylor Ridge. As you can see, we're right in line with what was approved for Ashford Park at five-point-five units per acre. We're about one unit above Taylor Ridge and Amherst and Fairview West are about one-and-a-half units. But kind of what I wanted to show, back to what I was just saying, if you take the section to just the west of us in Fairview West, that's right above four units per acre, but there's no open space, there's, the entry features aren't there, there aren't the amenities that we're doing and preserving the open space, the trees and all of that, so it's just an example of how, what an old neighborhood is to a new neighborhood and the requirements that we have to meet today. We're hitting the tree mitigation, we pointed that earlier, we're saving about four thousand units, I mean, four thousand gallons per inches, that's about a thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifty more than our neighborhood to the north and our sites about their size, they're a much larger site than we are. Additional project virtues, trails, I think we discussed this earlier, we have a six-foot trail that connects us east to west and goes through the main open space, we have five-foot walking paths as well. We also, staff asked us, Lake Sharon sidewalk was put in at four feet, we've been requested to take that out and replace that with a five-foot sidewalk. We've discussed the trees, we really planned this around, there's some significant trees in the site, there's one fifty-four inch and then everything else is below forty inches, but we tried to make sure that we planned something around that fifty-four inch and that's why that road doesn't come through, so you can kinda see it from two different directions at the entrance, you see that, that fifty-four inch tree. And then we saved some large trees around the playground and the open space. The open space, as we said, it's about, just for a reference point, that football, that's the size of a football field stuck in there, so it's larger than a football field, as wide as a football field, just for a comparison for everybody to see. We added the parking. The playground, I went over this in the work session with y'all, this playground is something that we've kinda started doing in our neighborhoods as a prompt from another city that we're in, they were missing, we're working on a city park, we're actually building a city park as part of our development and that's when the questions asked was for an inclusive playground, because that's one that, it caters to wheelchair-bound, sensory issues, kids with autism and things like that. So it's just an all-inclusive playground that allows, that's just catered towards everyone. The well abandoned, we said we have a contract to abandon the well, we close this property, it'll be gone in sixty days. Michelle had gone over the third plan, the third plan, passed through that. We discussed the traffic count, much less traffic count than what was previously proposed on the site with the future land use plan. And as we said, we will be doing return lanes, closing the median and those things that were justified. And representative product in that, and, oh, that was, that was for detention, I think, I think that's been brought up. This is, this is Walton Ridge in a massive rain. I got a question that, about what happens when it rains in these ponds. The rain goes into the pond, it fills up and then it goes into a detention outlet. This was, this was about two hours into a massive rain where the, where the streets look like they're filling up and, and sort of backing up, but this is what actually was happening in the pond. So we'll have similar detention ponds we do in Walton Ridge where we'll capture the water, bring it up under the ground into a pond and it stays underground, so we're not going onto our neighbors and we're releasing at the same rate that we have today. Oh, entry, okay. I will go back to our overall plan and I'll be here to answer questions.
Are there any other questions from council?
Got a quick question. This property is planned to have an HOA.
Yes, sir.
My HOA forbids parking on the street longer than twenty-four hours, not all HOAs do that. Do you guys have plans for doing anything like that?
I haven't, but I could definitely look into that, that would probably help, yes.
Well...
That would help with parking concerns tremendously.
I mean, the, the difference between the neighborhood where I moved into because I didn't want the on-street parking versus the neighborhood that I left, which did allow on-street parking, of course, both neighborhoods, about half of everybody's upset because some people wanna park on the street, some people don't want to navigate the cars, but that gives us the opportunity to choose and that might be something that would alleviate Kelly's concerns.
Any other questions?
What is the dark orange? You've got the light orange and the dark orange.
Oh, those are representing areas where we have an additional tree. So those lots actually have the front setbacks a little further back and we were just identifying those lots for us in the plan. So those actually have an additional tree in the front yard and we were identifying those for us in the future, especially when we go forward and we build with our builders, making sure that they know where that is, where the trees are.
And can, can you go back, read forward to the traffic survey that you have?
That's, that's, yes, that's the traffic count, yes, ma'am.
There's something, maybe someone could help me, something I was reading in the packet was saying that there would be like no more than a hundred cars in an hour during their peak season. I mean, we've got three-hundred-and-ten houses and most houses are gonna have two cars, so how, I, I just saw that in our packet, so maybe you can...
I can't, I have, I'm...
Okay.
You, they could might have been two-hundred-and-seventeen trips during the AM peak hour and two-hundred-and-ninety-one in the PM peak hour from our traffic letter. We had a traffic letter from the engineering. I don't believe, I don't know anything that would've said a hundred an hour. We do have a note in here that says development is, is predicted to generate two-hundred-and... two-thousand-nine-hundred-and-twenty-four trips daily with two-hundred-and-seventy trips in the peak hour in the morning and two-hundred-and-ninety-one in the peak hour in the evening. So that's more than, than a hundred.
Any other questions?
I do, John, can you remind me again what the square foot minimum is for each product?
Man, I'm sorry, here, here, check on the HOA thing.
Oh, no, can you remind me again what the square foot minimum is for each product?
Square foot management for the cottage is fourteen-hundred, but that range on those houses, I just, I just checked on that for you, is sixteen-fifty to twenty-four-hundred on the smaller cottages.
Tell me, six...
So the minimum, minimum on the cottage is fourteen-hundred.
Okay.
But the range of what they're gonna be is, is, they'll assume they're on like sixteen-fifty to twenty-four, thirty-two or something, twenty-four-hundred.
Okay.
The fifties, I believe, Michelle had that up a second ago, I think it's a fifty to eighteen.
Oh, I can't remember.
The patio.
I think it's fifteen.
It's on the other.
Sorry.
Okay. Should we go to the other?
Oh.
Oh, thank you very much. I'm not gonna, off the top of my head tonight, fifteen-hundred and then the bigger ones are
And the price point, and the price points are gonna be similar to Walton Ridge?
Yes.
Are there any other questions? Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'm gonna open it up for public hearing. We have several people that'd like to speak. First one is Bruce Schultes.
Yeah, I'm gonna wait a little bit, that's okay?
Um, well, we prefer you, we've got a bunch of them here, we, everybody's gonna get their turn, so...
I'll pass, thank you.
Your one?
I'm Don Glockel, twenty-one-on-one, Lake Sharon Drive. I'm not opposed to this project. I think they've done a good job trying to match this project with the neighboring communities, lined up most of the lot lines the best they could. The east side is the hardest, but that's not the John Baum families or this gentleman problem, it's because of the great change in the two subdivisions. The back of Baum's east property line is probably eight feet... The back of Baum's east property line is probably eight feet higher than the yards over there. So that's, that's something we can't deal with. Earlier in the workshop, there was some mention about maybe moving some of the bigger houses in the front, the smaller houses in the back. But that would negate what I just went through. I think, I think the subdivision lines up very well with existing boundaries. And I'm certainly one that thinks that a person in the city of Corinth should be able to develop their property. And the Baum's have owned this property for years. And I feel like they, they deserve the courtesy to, for us to let them do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Sterling Sachs? Please take your name and your address for the record, please.
Sterling Sachs, 1713 Birch Lane, here in Corinth. I came in here and I was going to compare this property, this development to the Ashford, a development across the street. And as bad as the impression on the city is of the Ashford development across the street that's getting built right now and developing, I think this is a worse plan than even Ashford, so I come here and speak in opposition to it. Density and so on and so forth. I had my own personal revelation to the 2040 plan, the night that the city received the international award for planning. And it, it all, it all kind of came into a realization for me that the 2040 plan and everything that Corinth was going for is like a European type of development of high density stacking people on it. Makes sense why we have a lot of the roundabout and plans for more and more roundabouts around the city. And the sad thing is I don't think anybody in Corinth really wants to live in a European city. They don't want to see Corinth turn into a European high density city. I mean, the next thing we know, we'll get a train stop across the street here so that the homeless people coming from Dallas can stop here and then go sleep in Agora, which I don't think anybody else wants either, it'd be very European of us. Anyway, I'd like to call for the council to vote tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Jared Dale?
Jared Dale, 2807 Goodnight Trail. I'm opposed to this project as it stands now. I spoke to planning and zoning meeting a few months ago. And my main concern then was the density. Yeah, we have fewer cottage homes in there now or the townhouses. But the cottage homes are, it's a townhouse without calling it a townhouse. I mean, they, they aren't touching, so I guess it's technically not a townhouse. But the density still hasn't been resolved. It's still too dense. And Mr. Sachs was saying, we're just stacking more and more people on top of each other. And this is, our city shouldn't be doing this. Time and time again, we have city, citizens here saying, we don't want the density. We don't want the density of this development. I've come up here several times saying, I don't want the density that's involved with this development. But yet again, here we are fighting against the density. It's too dense. You know, the developer changed the plans to reduce the number of townhouses and so forth. It only made a difference if it changed fewer residences. That's not anywhere statistically significant, that's, that's a miniscule amount. As far as the street parking goes and the street width, I mean Hollis, the street, I don't know if everyone's familiar with that, but if you drive into Hollis, it's a very wide street because it was going to be collector, it was planned that way a long time ago. It's very wide, parking on that street either side, no problem. On my street, Goodnight Trail, and on several of the other streets around, there's the narrower streets. As, as Kelly was saying, you're weaving in and out, it's a conflict. There's some of this, there's a street close by us where we have big truck parked on one side, two big trucks parked on the other side. It's, it's harrowing getting through there, especially if you drive in a very big vehicle. Fortunately, I drive in smaller vehicles, not a big deal. But if I were to drive a truck through there, it would be, it would be close to hitting mirrors on each side. And, you know, additionally, what Kelly was saying, and I think her main point was that, you know, there's, there's too many houses in a row to be able to park there and not park in front of your neighbor's house. I get irritated when my neighbor's parked in front of my house. And there's plenty of room there and it irritates me, especially when they're having a gathering or something. Or if I want to have a gathering, God forbid, the same night when my other neighbors does. Finally, something was mentioned about this being a unique or new traditional and already approved this kind of thing for other neighborhoods. But that doesn't make it right. Just because it's been approved or done in other neighborhoods, doesn't make it right. Doesn't make it something that Corinth needs. So I'm urging you to vote against this. And please listen to what the rest of the citizens here have to say tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Sam Wilson? Please take your name and your address for the record, please.
My name is Sam Wilson, 2917 Yurcon Drive. Ms. Pickens and Mr. Gerber, I, Garber, excuse me. I sent emails to all of the new council members, including the mayor, asking stipulating some concerns that I had of what we were doing in the way of developments. Ms. Pickens and Mr. Garber were the only ones that responded to me, which I appreciate. And my real issue really is the density. And I laid out a couple of concerns, but then my question about density is, how much is enough? How much is enough? And how is it calculated? Is it units or is it people? Mr. Garber responded to me with a lot of gray information about, excuse me, the, what the planning was and what it, what it turned out to be and, and how important it is that we have these developments so that we would attract commercial business. And he stated to me in an email back that presently the ratio for our city is 15, 15% to 85%, 15% being commercial and 85% being residential. And what we really needed to do is get that commercial piece up higher. And with Agora, it was projected, and if I'm mistaken, it's wrong, please correct me, is that we would get to a 40/60 percentage, 40% commercial and 60% residential. And to be a healthy city, we ought to be 50/50, that's where we ought to be. So what are we doing? We're not improving commercial, we're not adding commercial, we're adding residential. So that percentage is going to be exacerbated even more. So, you know, my recommendation would have been to take that property and use it maybe as you've been thinking about as TOD. And what is that? Transit, transit objective development. And if you wanted to really do a nice job with that product, our project, you might look at doing, at doing a family and commercial project. And I understand that that might not be possible based on the zoning that we have today. But I think it certainly would be an interesting position just to rethink the whole thing. And by the way, the Baum's and the Kayden heads have every right to sell that property and to have it developed. And I don't want to stand in any way of them being able to utilize the property the way they want to. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alana Fix? Please take your name and your address to the record, please.
Alana Fix, 2712 Cherokee Trail, Corinth, Texas. I want to start with my last comment first. Council approved Walton Ridge, which has been brought up a lot tonight, which is 164 houses on 50 acres. This development is 310 houses on 57 acres, but seven of those are the parks that he's putting in. So that's double the amount of units on the same amount of acres. If Walton Ridge is profitable and functionable for the developer, why can't that be done here? Now I want to get on to the actual presentation. Where I'm looking at is actually the cottages that are right around the park that he's built. I've highlighted for you the areas, these are actually alleys, not streets. So there's 48 cottages, they're not going to have any street accessibility to them, whatever that word might be. All right, now I get to read to you. Parking is a huge concern for me and many residents. However, this concern can be avoided by keeping the area single-family four as currently zoned. Parking for traditional houses and patio are not the issue because there's enough street parking available. Yet the cottages, the developer is counting two spaces for the garage, two spaces for the driveway. However, there's only 85 on-street parking spots for the 170 cottages. That means half of them get to park in the street and the other half, well, they have to wait their turn, I guess. That's crazy to me because there's good news. If we keep it single-family four, you don't have to worry about any of that. Current data from the National Association of Realtors shows starter homes are think of the past. 48% of Americans between the ages of 18 and 24 who bought homes last year plan to stay in them for more than 16 years. If the home buyers from this proposed neighborhood stay for 16 years or more, odds are they're going to need to park in the street at least once and use that third car spot. Lastly, oh, I already said that, so look at me, I'm done. Please keep a single family or at least bring the density down and give these people a place to park. Thank you.
Thank you. Melanie Bristow? Please take your name and your address for the record, please.
I'm Melanie Bristow, I live at 2013 Yellowstone in Corinth. And I live on the west side of Posto. One of the things I wanted to mention is something that I just discovered since probably November 1st. So I'm a commuter, I commute from Corinth to Grapevine. And I usually leave between 7:00 in the morning and 8:15, 8:30. So that, that's the timeframe we're talking about. So the last, since November 1st, and that doesn't include the week of Thanksgiving because that was off. There were three occasions during that five week period that probably like most of you and most of the travelers or the commuters from Corinth, I use a travel, a traffic app when I leave my house in the morning, I turn it on, Waze, whatever you use. And because I don't know from my house, should I go to the freeway, should I go to 2499? Most of the time, it has me going down 2499, which you travel a lot. And that's because of accidents on 35. But what's interesting, a few days, for a few days, there were three days, Waze took me not down Lake Sharon, but it took me from Meadowview, so on the west side of Posto, all the way down Meadowview to get to the highway. And that kind of concerned me. So I'm right by Lake Sharon and I couldn't use Lake Sharon. And I don't know what the issues were, whether it's the roundabout, whether there was an accident on Lake Sharon. But three days out of five weeks, it's taken me down Meadowview, all the way from the other side of Posto. And that's, to me, is alarming because you're adding 300 at least, a minimum, cars in that area that are also going to be commuters, you know, maybe 600 cars in that area that will also be commuters using that stretch of road that may not be able to use that stretch of road. So I just wanted you to be aware that it is putting more traffic, like it or not, into Fairview West, Fairview East, all the way to the freeway. So that was the point I wanted to make. I strongly urge you to vote no on the density to take it down to single-family four. Thanks.
Thank you. Robert Stonecypher? Please state your name and your address for the record, please.
My name is Robert Stonecypher, I live at 2520 Meadowview. I'm not opposed to developing this property, I'm just opposed to this plan. We have an envisioned plan in place and zoning in place already. And it seems like the norm should become to let developers come in and tell us how we're going to shape our city. I think that should be left to the citizens of Corinth, not, not the developer that's going to make the money. There's enough people that are, you can see that are opposed to this, that I think we should listen to the citizens and not the developer. So that's really all I have to say, I just hope you vote no against this and we can keep it zoned the way it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Austin Ortega? State your name and your address to the record, please.
Austin Ortega, 2801 Custer Drive. Good evening, everybody. First, I'd actually like to say, Mr. Burke, you gave us a lot of information at one of the previous council meetings regarding PDs. That actually provided a ton of insight as to why the city and how they're looking forward to some new developments. Understand it completely, as laws have changed, the city doesn't get that say like it used to. And therefore the PD provided that opportunity. With that, that being said, I'm not, I'm the, again, just one of the people that, that are here with you today, I'm not actually 100% opposed to this. I work for a company that sells mortgages and right now mortgages is a hard business. The more houses we have, the more mortgages we have. The better the business that I work for does, provides for my family. It is my best interest for this to be as dense as humanly possible. However, looking at it that way is short sighted for us. Realistically, we should be looking at what is a win-win-win situation, not just for the developer, not just for the city, but also for the residents too. There has to be some balance between the three, the three parties here. There has to be something that can work. I appreciate that the matching the outside, great, but that's not really a transition. And we've seen with other developments that have been tabled, that, that their transition zone for the overs even greater. Right now we have a single world of houses that match the development. Everything else besides that is not. So about 70% of those houses match nothing else that's there. The increased density too, while we look at that number and it says, hey, it's from four to five and a half from Fairview, excuse me, into the, into the Baum property, that's actually a 37 and a half percent increase in density. So nearly a 40% increase in density moving less than 100 yards, right, 200 feet by the letters. We go from having a density of four to density of five and a half, again, 40% increase. You look at that number small and you say, yeah, it's, it's small, but really the percentage that we're increasing it is dramatic. I really have to say a lot of nice things about some of the stuff that he's doing as far as the collector road being cut off, that personally benefits me greatly. However, the density is still incredibly high. And as there are a lot of children that also plan Hollis, those roads and as we've brought up previously, those roads will become busy. There's no way around it. Meadowview, Hollis, all the collector roads, even the roads that are now not collectors or potentially not collectors, will still become busy with traffic. These are things to be considered and be concerned about. Fundamentally, I think this is a good project and a good developer that's done good stuff in the city. Can there be something where we can find a common ground on the density that can still be profitable and still be admirable for the city as well?
Thank you. Brian Head? Please state your name and your address for the record.
Brian Head, 2700 Warwick Drive, Corinth, Texas. I live in Tenders Ridge, he had some stuff up there. We did, they, they kept a lot of trees, I have one. We have sidewalks, we were developed around 2000, 2001. So this is a new rule that all of a sudden it's taking money from them. I am in opposition of the proposed modifications to the SF4 zoning requirements. All the requested changes are to increase profits. The SF4 requirements are set for a purpose. It helps provide homogeneous neighborhoods. On the south side of Lake Sharon, this property is surrounded on all three sides with existing SF4 house homes that were built based on these standards. Envision Corinth, which is in his presentation states, ensure that property values of existing neighborhoods stay stable. It says that exactly. To ensure that property values of existing neighborhoods stay stable. Part of that is having homogeneous neighborhoods where every lot meets the 7,500 square foot requirement. This is especially important when you're connecting this neighborhood to surrounding pre-existing neighborhoods. This will be disrupted by this 2,700 square foot homes. This, when I first moved to Dallas in 94, they said, don't go to the colony. Do not buy a house there, you'll go to neighborhoods and you'll have a row of houses that are like really small and then you'll see another house and they're all two, another street, they're all two stories and they're big, big lots. And then you'll see another house and they're all two, another street, they're all two stories and they're big, big lots. They said, it's just crazy there, you don't want to go there. That's, we're building, this, this neighborhood will be known for that. At the planning and zoning meeting, a couple of commission members said that they were impressed that they came back with some changes, they actually accepted, you know, they made some changes. Well, there's still over eighty percent of this is non-traditional homes. Eighty-two point five percent is non-traditional homes. The, plus how often, I, you know, I've lived here for twenty-eight, almost twenty-eight years. I've gone to lots of these meetings. And I have never seen, in the planning and zoning, over fifty percent of the conversation was about parking. In all the other meetings I've been, I've never seen so much discussion about parking for a single-family neighborhood. Just because there wasn't a builder that met the, what we have around it, just because there wasn't a resume there that matched it, I'm not going to hire that guy when I'm interviewing him. I'm going to wait for the next batch. He said he can build two hundred and twenty-five traditional homes on this property. Then do it. We don't need high density. And thank you for your.
Thank you. Joe Bednar? Please state your name and your address for the records, please.
Hello, I'm Joe Bednar. My address is twenty-five oh one Post Oak. I have four acres and it's right across from the Lutheran church there, near Post Oak and Lake Sharon. So I've been here for about thirty years. John Baum helped me get my property platted thirty years ago. So I've seen a lot going on. I think the Bureau, a lot of the problems in Corinth was the fact that they tried to make it a bedroom community with a lot of commercial development and caused a lot of financial problems with the property taxes. I think if we would have been more closely aligned like Little Elm did with their main street and a lot of commercial on it, it would have made things a lot easier. Same that, I think the density of this development is way too high, especially with the cottage homes. I don't know if any other developments have these cottage homes. I know they have patio homes, which are bigger, but the cottage homes are very small. I like the density of, is it Ashford Park, the, the Taylor Farms, a hundred acres? I like that density, I've been through that neighborhood several times. I like the way the, the patio homes are in the middle with the alleyways and then the, the streets are on both sides. I think that helps the street parking. I think it makes the area more uniform. I did talk to the sales lady, I think her name was Lori, and I asked her, are y'all selling the little houses compared to the big houses? And she said, we're selling most of the big houses. We've got those also. So people are not necessarily wanting the smaller homes. I just throw that out. The last point I want to make, I submitted some papers from the Railroad Commission that talked about the oil wells, okay? I'm in the lease area, I get, I get royalty on it. And they have two oil wells on that John Baum lease on this five acres. One oil well is not in production anymore. And the other oil well, I think, is at fifty percent production. I had sent a ma- an email to the Vice President and asked him what was their status on continuing to use those wells, and they said they would get back with me. And he never did. I did submit a copy of that email to the city. So y'all can take it. I, I think it'd be a good idea to shut those wells down. I don't think it is advantageous to the city for that. Thank you very much for your time, I'm glad, y'all do a good job here.
Thank you. Arlen Jote?
Well, Ben Jote, two thousand and fifteen year old, Stone Lake. Meeting after meeting, all we hear from the residents of this city is high density, high density, it's too high. We are against it. And what happens, you guys make decision after decision, every time, with no exception. But that is against what the citizens want. I don't know how you guys feel about that. At the election, there is only one reason why you guys weren't replaced. It's because Mike didn't want to become a mayor. We didn't want to. We didn't want, we have our jobs and we trusted you again, sir, personally to you, Mr. Headman. And Kelly, I want you to not only ask about parking spots, but about the density, about the elephant in the room. Be brave, dear, because I voted for you, my kids are behind me, we trust you. What's going on here? This lady, the Michelle, are you employing the developers? Why are you behaving like that? Why are you using the nice words of, oh, it's tiny, it's calming, it's narrow, it's no problem, it's so good? And then when Kelly asks you, hey, what about parking? And you say, oh, but it's not that bad. It's actually not, not, definitely not a problem.
Sir?
Your behavior.
You're out of order.
I apologize.
That's it, you're out of order, take your seat.
How come?
You can't, you can't address the people in our staff. Take your seat.
Great, that reminds me of the communist time when they were stuffing us in those buildings. Yes, I'm living there. I don't need security in America where I came to be free. Is that the communists did not listen to us, to their progress? That's what you guys do.
Michael King?
Hi, King, twenty-six ten Zachary Drive. First of all, thank you, Council, city staff, I know y'all work hard. Uh, I just want to bring up one thing. There was a lot of conversations tonight about parking, the traffic, this and that. And you guys have heard me use this analogy, I know people make fun of me, but that's okay. Once again, it's a piece of the pie with the whipped cream. When we talk about the traffic, we have got to be inclusive of what's going on in the entire area, not just Oak Ridge Park. We talk about, there was a conversation about, I don't know, one hundred cars, two hundred and fifteen cars, or peak hour, two hundred and seventy-five. That's true for Oak Ridge, if those numbers are accurate. But what about the four hundred cars that are coming across the street from Ashford? What about the hundred-and-some cars that are going to be coming from the quarries and when it starts? What about the few hundreds of cars that are going to be coming from the Prince Parkway, uh, Lake Sharon area when all that develops? It's all not going to go to thirty-five, some of it's going to go eastbound. Kelly, first of all, my family's prayers to you, Brian and Maddie still continue down as well. But you made the comment about where you travel, twenty-four ninety-nine, twenty-one eighty-one, and you made some comments about the heavy traffic. Think about how it's going to be when we saturate even more high density with what we're talking about today. Not to mention, you guys are going to get another challenge here in a couple of weeks, months, or whatever it is, hillside. It's coming, we all know it's coming. And other properties are coming. That traffic is all going to stack up over time. Where's it going to go? Inclusive of the traffic, what about infrastructure? I heard any conversations about that. How about law enforcement? How about fire rescue? How about the new fighter? There's only so much money in that art account. Are we going to be able to handle all that with the density? And what, my parting words is, I've heard this word used numerous times in the vision plan, neighborhood. What is a neighborhood? Is it a neighborhood what people want to come and live? Or is the neighborhood where the people that currently live there? And I think y'all have realized that the majority of the neighborhood that currently lives in the area does not want this density. Once again, I am not against growth. I'm against, against specific types of growth in specific locations. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have some other ones we have to put on the record. It's Bruce Schultes, he is for that, for the development. Peter Farrell is for the development. There's, this one is Christine Larson, she's against. Both. Barbara Gullik, she is against the proposal. Susan Griffin is against the proposal. Carrie Dale is against the proposal. Christine Peterson is against the proposal. Michael Owens is against the proposal. Mina Sax is against the proposal. Samuel Manchester is against the proposal. Erwin Holbert is against the proposal. Jonathan Holbert is against the proposal. Steve and Shay, is it Penny, is against the proposal. Wesley Nielsen is against the proposal. Emily Head is against the proposal. Tyler Head is against the proposal. And Kevin and Deana Kupick is against the proposal. And I'll read this for the records. Properties within two hundred feet of the subject site as of twelve seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, the city has received one letter of support.
Mayor, I'm so sorry. Michelle read into the record the updated version and I forgot to tell you that. That's, that's a little old compared to the ones we can receive earlier this evening. Sorry about that.
All right, thank you. All right. At this time, does a developer want to respond to any of the accusations?
I just wanted to clarify three things. I skipped through some of my current projects at the beginning. Usually we talk about Walton Ridge and the density. I just wanted to clarify that Walton Ridge was, the single-family part of that was thirty-five acres. It wasn't fifty, if you'll remember, we had fifteen acres or more of multifamily on that, or five units per acre. So it wasn't a hundred and, you know, sixty lots on fifty acres, it was on thirty-five, just wanted to clarify that. The, we're talking about the neighborhood, the density and where we are at the five point, five point five. We're similar, we are the exact same as Ashford Park. And we've heard some people tonight say that they did like Ashford Park. But I'd like to point out that the citizens came in and asked for a change from the mixed residential, the six units, six to ten units. And that, the density before, they were trying to push it right to the top with ten units an acre. The new plan, future land use plan, is a neighborhood, and this falls within that new plan. It falls within the, or the neighborhood. We're at five point five units per acre, yes, we're above those, but we do fit within the neighborhood plan as, as staff has said, we conform with the future land use plan. Something mentioned the wells, I should remind them that they will be gone. And then parking, I think we've talked about it a lot, like P and Z could not imagine what I was talking about with the parking, the on-street parking. I think it's also a confusing, new, newer concept. We have looked at Ashford Park across the street. I think the, I don't want to call it on-street parking because the, the off-street parallel parking is a way we're trying to address that. And we would be fine with skipping something in our HOA docs that are, you know, parking for over twenty-four hours. We would be fine doing something like that.
That it?
Yes, sir.
Okay. At this time, I will propose a motion. And I'll entertain a motion on this item.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve with comments?
Of course.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, please go ahead.
There are also conditions that the staff was asking for that are.
Yes, so.
Left term line constructed.
Of course.
Western, eastern median openings on Lake Sharon. Middle is, this median opening is closed as part of construction. And if you wanted to add that the HOA require a restriction, no over twenty-four parking.
Yes, please. All of those things that you just read.
And I'll second it with those additions.
Any further discussion?
I'd just like to say that I like the look, I like the concept, but I don't like the density at all. And I'm concerned about the traffic. And there is just, to me, it's no different than a townhome, which I would almost rather like the look of a townhome than these little cottages. I'm not talking negative about the look, it looks great, but I just think it is too many in that one area. And that, that does concern me. And I also want to just say, the staff is doing a great job and appreciate what you guys do. And they're just doing their job, and to be called out and humiliated, that's, that's concerning. So I appreciate those of you that speak and you're respectful, and that, I really do appreciate that. So thank you.
Any other?
I have a comment. So I think to try to distill this down a little, to try to give you an insight into how maybe I would be making decisions based on these items. The first is not, does the city council think that a development in this area is a good idea? Right? Because that will happen. And we've learned, I think, on some more recent developments that, that the option of having a developer develop without being pulled into a planned development would essentially cause major problems. Like, they are allowed to do a lot of things, especially now that the state's changed some of the rules and regulations that the city is allowed to regulate. Everything from building materials to you name it, that makes it tough. So when we have a planned development come in, the decision is, the additional homes, so those additional eighty homes, is that worth the concessions that the city of Corinth has received? So the parkland, the trees, about twenty percent of you are going to back up for forever to parkland. So there's fifty-some-odd homes that back up to this development, and about twelve of you will have, you know, open land back behind you. And so we weigh those things in, the parkland is huge. And is it worth the additional eighty homes to make all of those things happen? Versus a developer going in and just clear-pitting everything and, and having his way. So I would contend that the, finding a win-win solution and developers telling the city what to do, the planned development process is a lot more of the city telling the developer what to do rather than the other way around. The other couple of things that I wanted to address, the traffic concerns, development going in around a gas well, against any sort of multifamily, flooding issues, infrastructure strain. And street parking, a lot of those things are going to be there whether the city steps in with the PD to try to game the trees and the parkland, or whether we just allow a developer to develop this thing at their will. The things that I do believe are going to improve is, you know, reading through the emails, the crime. People are concerned about crime rates going up in the area. My guess is with five hundred thousand to million-dollar homes being put in, that crime's not going to be a problem for us with this development. Go ahead, I'm sorry. Emergency services, we recently gave our police and fire about a million dollars. We recently gave our police and fire about a million dollars extra this year. We are hiring new officers and new firemen. That would not have happened without development in the city. The only way to make that happen is to increase taxes or not do it. Wildlife and trees, seeing as how a developer can, you know, clear-cut a property, you know, that's one of the things that we need to weigh with the parkland and the tree preservation. So if our goal is to save as much wildlife and trees as we can, I think a planned development's a good way to do that. And I'll leave it there.
Any other comments?
Yes, sir. The other thing, Scott said a lot of what I would have said. The other thing I do want to say is that we do keep in mind your property values and we are trying to preserve and protect them. And you may disagree with this particular development doing that. But given our inability to regulate materials unless we have a PD, the other things that are coming down the pipe, I think this is the best way to preserve your property values. We voted no to a higher density use on this property. It was too dense. We talked, I think, at the last meeting about the fact that there is legislation that may pass the next time we're here, the next, within the next couple of years, that would take away our ability to regulate density at all. If we vote against this plan, the time cycle for when this comes back to us, it may be that we can't regulate density at all. That the plan that we voted down would be something that we can't prevent. And I think when you balance the benefits of this neighborhood against the potential for what could come in the future, I think this is a good trade. And we could have honest disagreements about that. But I don't want anyone in the audience to think that I haven't read these letters and considered the strain on the infrastructure, the loss of community, schools and education, traffic concerns and crime and safety. And I want to say something about, you know, we're talking about houses that are somewhere between 1,600 and 1,800 square feet and up. The first house I bought was 1,350 square feet. And we had a kid in that house. And then we moved like a few blocks away. And this is when we lived in Dallas. And part of the beauty of that neighborhood was we walked around it and thought about where we wanted to live next in that neighborhood. And that happens here in Corinth. I live in Fairview Estates. And I had neighbors that initially bought homes across the street and then moved into that neighborhood when their families expanded. And I think this development could foster that kind of young family transitioning to other neighborhoods. The neighborhoods that you guys live in. I think it will create demand in your neighborhood. You'll bring young people in who want to move around into the beautiful neighborhoods that you guys inhabit. And I think, I really think you may be underestimating the value of that green space in this development. You know, it's a place for kids to play unstructured together, to get people out of their houses and together outside. And I just think it's got a lot of great potential. And the last thing I'm going to say, we had a veteran here at the very first, and everybody rightfully applauded for him. And he, because he fought for our freedom. And there have to be limits on what we're willing to do to limit other people's ability to freely use their property. And if we as a council abuse that authority that we have to regulate use, it will be taken away. There are people in Austin who want to take it away because they don't think it's reasonably used. And that's a real fear of mine. And you may or may not agree with me. But I'm telling you, it's real. And if we keep telling people no to things like this, products like this, in two years, four years, six years, we won't have the authority to do it. And things will go up that you won't believe, in my opinion. And that's all I have to say.
Is there any other comments from council? If not, cast your vote.
Oh, we did.
We did? It passes three to one. Okay. Business agenda. Consider an act on the ordinance of the city council and the city of Corinth technically implementing the property residential enhancement program. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. You may recall during the budget process, you allocated funds for this program to the tune of about $50,000. The idea behind this is that we can work and partner a little bit with some of our property owners that are trying to attempt to rectify code violations and make improvements to the residential property. And so tonight, I'd like Clea Joyner as Clea Rivier and Shelley McCann. Clea is our building official and Shelley is our code enforcement officer will present this ordinance to you and answer any questions that you have.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll make this brief. So this program is, we have a very aging community in our city. 28% of our homes are over 24 years old. So this property enhancement program will help these residents fix up their homes from painting their homes, fences, driveways, anything they need. The city will match up to 50% of the, what they pay up to $5,000. They have to live in the homes for two years. And the year, the homes have to be at least five years old. Just tell us a little bit, a brief about the program that we're going to partner with, possibly different programs within the area like Lake City Serve, churches, other organizations, possibly churches and other organizations that Tina has. This shows the different things the programs will cover, from painting to driveway replacements, replacement of, removal of accessory structures, fence replacements. Eligible things will be if someone just wants to paint their home and change the color. That's not covered. And the rental, the properties have to be owner-occupied, like I said. That's about it. You guys have any questions?
Are there any questions from council?
I may have completely blanked out. Up 50%, up to what amount?
$5,000.
So, but they have to pay that $5,000 as a reimbursement?
Right. So they'll do the repairs first. They'll get everything done. Initially, we'll go out and see what the violation is. They'll do all the repairs. Once they've done the repairs, then I'll go out and see the repairs have been done. Once I say, okay, it's been done, then they'll get their reimbursement from the city.
Is, do we have anything in place for people that may not be able to afford? That's my concern, is that someone that's got $5,000, right? Probably, maybe isn't in need of help as much as someone that does not have $5,000.
Right. So it can be up to $5,000.
Right. Well, even if it, you know. Oh, right. Yeah. To get the $5,000 reimbursement, they would.
Be up to $5,000.
They would be spending $10. Yeah, right. So I guess my concern is, and I don't know if it's a concern, whatever, it's that the people that may need help the most, that are on an extremely fixed income or whatever, that can't, I mean, we know to put a fence up is $8,000. And I don't, I worry about the people that don't have the $8,000, but we're continuing to find them because they have a code violation. But they don't have the money to do it. And granted, if they don't have eight, they're not going to have four. You know, so I don't, is there something that we have? Do we have like a grant program or something that we can do to maybe help those homeowners? Hey, Clea?
How are you? Mayor and Council, it's always a privilege to stand in front of you. To answer your question, my experience with this program in prior city, it becomes so popular that people want to get on board. And there's organizations, Home Depot has a veterans program where they will pay as a complete project. There's church projects that contact us all the time. We just recently were contacted by a local fence company that is asking, is there a homeowner out there that needs a fence? We'd like to provide it for them. So it becomes popular enough where people want to get involved and be part of that. And there's all kinds of organizations out there that we can.
So you would provide those resources to homeowners that may be in need of assistance?
We do that now. We don't tow it enough. We don't show it enough. But if somebody's in dire need and needs help, we find or try to match them up with either a local church group, all the way down to mowing your lawn if you can't mow your lawn. But there's people out there that will mow lawns for people just to help them out. So we're doing that on a smaller scale. But when it comes to this product and doing work around, there are organizations where they have 100 volunteers will target a community that's in need. And that's all done through code enforcement identifying those areas that have the potential for blight or the potential for decay. And so that's where our focus is. A lot of people, if, there's a lot of qualifiers in this program. Those qualifiers are, you know, the age of the person, people with disability. And it's also driven with income. You're lower moderate income, you get the higher dollar matching fee. If you're a higher income, then you get only $1,000 matching.
And there's a formula you use. It's not subjective?
No, the formula is based on criteria that is through the housing urban development and also other Census Bureau statistics. So that's all built into the program. I think, I was hoping that would be in your packet. I think it was in the presentation.
It's in your.
The qualifiers are in place. So to answer your question in a long way, that program is not just you have to have the money to match. If they're in dire need, this program is designed to help them find that through making those connections. Because there are vendors out there that are willing to put in a, if they need an HVAC system, to put that in and help them with that by reducing their price. This program will help that. The intent is in the future that the program will grow and help you more and more things available for people that need. And then also people who don't have the money from day to day, especially in our current economy, to fix the fence that code enforcement is saying you need to do something about. So we get there, one way or another.
Okay. Thank you.
So what if, like Lake City Serve? So Lake, someone needs something and so they say, well, we will, we'll provide it. You know, we'll pay the $10,000. And then will the city reimburse the lakes they want? Okay.
It's got to be a homeowner. But like Clea said, we're going to compile like habitat for humanity, Lake City Serve. There's other organizations within Denton County that will help people that cannot even afford to put that money up front. So we're in the process of compiling that right now.
That'd be great.
Is there any other questions from council? I entertain a motion undecided. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Mayor, make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous. Item 16, consider that act on an interlocal agreement between the city of Corinth and Town of Shady Shores to provide project management for the West Shady Shores project between the city of Corinth and the Town of Shady Shores commencing November 16, 2023 until completion of the project. Mr. Garber.
Mayor and Council, I'm going to, Mayor and Council. Y'all are throwing me tonight. Glenn Barker, our director of public works and parks, is going to present this item tonight.
Mayor and Council, this is an IRA for the West Shady Shores Road Project. It's for the city of Corinth to work with West Shady Shores and represent, or I'm sorry, the Town of Shady Shores, and represent us as the liaison between Denton County and the cities. The area is on the map that we'll be project managing this project.
Any questions?
Do you have any questions on this? Okay, I entertain a motion on that item.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous. Consider an act on the interlocal agreement between the city of Corinth, Lake Dallas, and the Town of Shady Shores for the city of Corinth to provide project management for the Dobbs Road project commencing December 7, 2023 until completion. Mr. Campbell.
Mayor and Council, Glenn will also take this item.
Mayor and Council, this one here is with Lake, it's an IRA with Lake Dallas and West Shady, Town of Shady Shores for the Dobbs Road project for us to be the liaison for project management within county. The area is on the map.
Are there any questions from council? I entertain a motion on that item.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous. Consider an act on the nomination, appointment, resignation, and removal of Board of Commissions member. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is to fill one of the vacancies on the current beautiful board based on your interview earlier this evening.
Any questions? I entertain a motion undecided.
I'll make a motion to appoint Noel Peterson to keep Corinth Beautiful, place five, and to appoint Jennifer Olive to the Board of Adjustments and Board of Construction Appeals, place one, and to appoint Jelph Swartwald from place six alternate to place three.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous. Consider an act on a resolution casting a vote for a member of the Denton Central Appraisal District Board of Directors to serve a one-year term ending December 31, 2024. Mr. Campbell.
Mayor and Council, a few, a couple of months ago, you made a nomination for the DCA board, and we nominated Jared Utsler, who serves on our finance committee. I apologize. And he was willing to serve. You've seen his bio, I think, in your packet. Corinth has 28 votes that you can cast for one person or if you wanted to split that up, if you have someone else in mind. But Jared is the only one that we have spoken to, has expressed an interest.
Any questions to that? I entertain a motion on that.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 23-12-7-17, casting 28 votes for Jared Utsler to serve on the Denton Central Appraisal District Board of Directors for a one-year term ending on December 31, 2024.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous. Consider an act on. Consider an act on a resolution denying CoServe gas, LTD's statement of intent to increase rates within the city.
Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. You've seen items like this in previous agendas, and, uh, actually, these are typically on consent agenda, and we realized today we didn't do that, but very quickly, this is, uh, we are members of a steering committee, as you are aware, that's basically a representative, represents a consortium of cities with any of these gas rate, uh, increase requests that we get. Typically, they're through Atmos. This one is actually, uh, a case through CoServe, where they have, um, recommended raising rates, and the steering committee is recommending to their consortium of cities to deny that rate request and let it go through the process, uh, and it typically happens that we'll come back for some sort of settlement, uh, ordinance in the future.
Hey, Mayor, real quick, I want to make sure the back doors aren't locked. I think I heard somebody jiggling those door. Usually those don't automatically lock, but... Or I'll leave it open.
Okay. Do we get a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Cast your vote.
It's unanimous. Council comment and future agenda items. The purpose of this section is to allow each council member the opportunity to provide general updates and/or comments to fellow council members. The public enters that on any issues or future events. Also, in accordance with Section thirty point oh eight five of the Code of Ordinances, at this time, any council member may direct that an item be added as a business item to any future agenda. Mr. Garber.
Nothing, sir, thank you.
Mr. Holdsworth.
Nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Mrs. Henderson.
Nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Mrs. Pickens.
Just want to wish everybody Merry Christmas, since we won't be meeting again before then, and to thank everybody again for all your support for me and my family in the last three months. It's been a challenge, but it looks like my kid's going to be home for Christmas.
Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor. In the spirit of Christmas, I'm going to recommend, uh, that we push all the executive session items we had tonight to the January, the first meeting in January, if that's okay. There's nothing that, uh, can't wait till then, I know it's been a long night.
I don't think you're going to get any opposition from, I don't think I would, but again, I just want to wish everybody Merry Christmas, and again, I appreciate your leadership tonight, and this year, um, I know it was challenging, but I appreciate your leadership and, and, um, voting the way you did, so we're adjourned.